...meeting for Wednesday, March 16th to order. Mr. Aho, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Soler?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
And we're all here, so if you could all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One quick housekeeping note: due to fire regulations, we can't have anybody standing in the aisle, so there may be a couple seats down front for those that want to come up front. Good evening and welcome to the staff, students, and families from Wilcox Primary, George G. Dodge, and Twinsburg High Schools. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for March 16th. I'm Rob Felber, and honored to be your board president. It's been another busy month, is underway, with registration for our kindergarten class of 2029. So that doesn't make you feel old, but we do welcome our newest Tigers to our school's family. And yesterday was Ohio's primary, and what we thought, from a school's standpoint, that was interesting to note, is that Ohio voters approved 49 of 69 school issues, that's about 71 percent. Many of the Ohio districts passed issues from new expense to emergency and permanent improvement levies. Onto more entertaining news. If you're looking for the best entertainment value in town, then look to take in the THS Spring Play, that's March 18th and 19th. In addition to the schools, the city of Twinsburg has plans underway for the 2017 Bicentennial, and we're asking you to please contact the Parks and Recreation Department with your photography and artifacts, perhaps, especially those of our landmark schools. Tonight, we will hear committee reports, specifically on the agenda are the first reading of 15 policy updates. Our board policy requires that we have two readings of proposed changes, and the second reading will take place at the next Board of Education meeting. Many of the updates and revisions are recommended by our educational legal resources. Our administrators also maintain corresponding administrative guidelines that further mirror the policies set forth by the Board of Education. All the current approved policies can easily be viewed from the Board tab of the Twinsburg Schools website. Also tonight, the Board will consider a resolution instructing our treasurer to invoice the Ohio Department of Education for reimbursement over 2.7 million in funds that were redirected to local charter schools. These are funds that would have and should have stayed within our district. Your Board, and especially the Finance Committee, take our fiduciary responsibility very seriously. One of our jobs is also to use every means possible to keep you, the students and taxpayers, informed on all matters impacting the school's financial health. While over 60 districts have taken action on similar legislations, I want to be very clear: there will be no large checks, and there will not be a Twitter photo of your Board administrator smiling when funds are received. No one is smiling about this or any of the other financial challenges, such as the ongoing effort to hold on to our tangible personal property funds. We are not expecting any such reimbursement. So why ask, consider this resolution. I'll leave the rest on to our open discussion with my colleagues, and we encourage those who are able to stay for the remainder of our meeting to hear the discussion and the rest of the reports and actions, or of course, tune into Cable 9 for the broadcast of this meeting. So now I'll turn our attention to a more upbeat topic, the Students of the Month and our building updates. So without further delay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for superintendent's report.
Evening, Mr. Felber, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see everyone out. I was chatting with the family on the way in, we were just talking about how nice and warm it is. And I'm a gardener, so I was so excited to see the daffodils blooming, so spring is just around the corner, just hold on tight. Board of Education, we have some great students to celebrate and some great programs to talk about, but I have a couple of things just to share with you this evening. First of all, I think the students already know, we are in the fourth quarter of the school year. How did that happen? And I know that our class of 2016 knows it's the last quarter of the year, and they're super, super excited about commencement and prom and all the end-of-the-year activities. We are very excited for them, but we wish them that they, you know, pay attention to what's important, do the very best that they can, and make the end of the school year the very best, part of their 13 years here with us. And of course, as Mr. Felber just indicated, the class of 2029 is waiting to come in the other side, so, you know, school districts are like that, they're evolutionary, and kids move on, and we're just so excited to grow them with all these opportunities. So congratulations, and we look forward to seeing the class of 2016 commence at E.J. Thomas Hall very, very shortly. Board of Education, I have fantastic news to share, but I am being blinded by the light here.
I was going to say, is anybody able to reach the blinds?
This past week, we got exciting, exciting news, probably the most exciting news that a school district could have. Thank you so very much, sir. Samuel Bissell Elementary School actually received this outstanding news, and I am just so delighted to share this with you. Let me bring this to you. Last week, we received notification from the Ohio Department of Education that Samuel Bissell Elementary School is one of just 14 outstanding public schools nominated by Ohio for the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award. Bissell was nominated as an exemplary high-performing school. National Blue Ribbon Schools are public and non-public elementary, middle, and high schools that are producing outstanding results for students. They have demonstrated consistent excellence and made progress in closing gaps in student achievement. The National Blue Ribbon Schools' recognition program is part of a larger United States Department of Education effort to identify and disseminate knowledge about effective school leadership and promising instructional practices. With this significant nomination, Mrs. Johnson and her staff will prepare the nomination application, which is due in Washington, DC, to the U.S. Department of Education by the end of April. You can just imagine how excited they are over at Bissell. I think we heard that, you know, felt the ground shake when they got the news. And this was absolutely 100 percent unsolicited. They watch how our kids perform, they watch our district's performance, and we were, actually, I was, I received a survey questionnaire about a week or so ago, and they asked me to fill in the blanks, and then shortly thereafter, Mrs. Johnson got notifications. So she is so super excited, Board of Education, and we are so delighted about all this. And, you know, we say that it starts with our very first step in Tigers coming in through preschool and kindergarten, and when you get this kind of recognition, unsolicited recognition, we know that we're doing some really very, very great things here. And it's because of the support of our community that we can do that, so thank you, residents, for supporting our schools. And this is just the application, we haven't gotten the award yet, but it's the very first step of some excellent news, and I just know we're going to do well in the application process. So stay tuned for more exciting news about Bissell, and congratulations to Misty Johnson, her staff, her kids, and of course, the parents that support us here every single day. Yes, thank you. Last week, we sent out through the Twinsburg Bulletin our winter newsletter, so if you didn't get a copy of it, or you missed it as an insert, you can always stop by the Board Office or one of the Welcome Centers at any five of our schools to pick up a copy. It's 12 pages of great news about the Twinsburg City School District. And Board of Education, the reason why we sent it home to our families in the newsletter is because it saves us about $800 in postage. So we're always looking for ways to cut corners, and so if you didn't get a copy, or you just didn't notice it was in there, and you want one, please stop by one of our schools and pick up a copy. It's also found on our website under Publications, so if you're looking for an electronic version, you can find it there as well. And then finally, earlier today, I had an opportunity to tape our April Twinsburg Schools Today show, and we have a great show again. It'll be filmed or shown actually in April on Channel 15, and it has two segments. The first segment talks about our community's Fill a Bag, Feed a Family program. Board of Education, if you can recall back to last summer, this was a huge, community-wide initiative led by Joyce Hunt and the folks over at the Emergency Assistance Center. And if you remember, residents, what happened in the summer is we all received a blue grocery bag on our front door, and we were asked to fill the bag with groceries, and then on one Saturday morning, a bunch of community volunteers ran around the community and collected all this food, and it supported folks who just don't have the daily needs that they require, and it helps over the summer months when oftentimes the food pantry is a little bit there. So look for more information, we will have information on our district website, but the school district is sponsoring or co-sponsoring the event this year with the city, the township, and Reminderville, and again, the Emergency Assistance Center. So thank you for your advanced participation in that wonderful event. And then my second guest board is Logan Powaski. Logan is a senior this year at Twinsburg High School. Many of you would know him as the face of Twinsburg Schools Today Summer Edition, and I just had a great opportunity to chat with him about his plans after high school and all the great things that he has in store for himself. So stay tuned to Twinsburg Schools Today, the April show, it'll be airing beginning of the week of April 4th, so a lot of exciting things going on here. So enough about me and all this great news, we have some wonderful students to celebrate, so I'd like to ask Ms. Villa to come forward with Mr. Asti, because I know there are a bunch of Wilcox Tigers here just waiting for some wonderful recognition.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. Just wanted to congratulate the students who were about to receive this award. Every month, the teachers nominate one student in their classroom for being kind, respectful, caring, and demonstrating some great qualities within the classroom and outside of the classroom as well. So without anything further, I'd like to call up those students, and when I call up the student, I'm also going to mention the teacher's name, and I'd like them to come up as well, just to support their student as well. So our first student up is a kindergarten student, Javion Sherman. His teacher is Mrs. Hannah, who's actually unable to be here this evening, but she said that Javion is such a hard worker. He always puts forth his best effort, and he's a big help in the classroom. He's always the first one to help his friends and clean up the room, and Mrs. Hannah is so proud of him. And Javion said about Mrs. Hannah, that she's always smiling and happy, and is very helpful with him and his letters and sounds, and she makes Wilcox a great place. Our next student is Carrie Wymer in Mrs. Ianni's class. Mrs. Ianni is honored to nominate Carrie for this award. Each day, Carrie comes to school ready to learn, she shows respect, and is a good friend to all. Carrie truly follows the Wilcox pledge, and Mrs. Ianni is so proud of her. Carrie says that Mrs. Ianni is the nicest teacher because she gives her really good students a piece of candy. She's very helpful, and whenever Carrie does not know a word, she helps her sound it out. Our next student is Jeremiah Carvallo in Mrs. Lowe's class. Mrs. Lowe says that Jeremiah is an excellent student and a great friend to his classmates. He's caring and respectful, and he always tries his best and to help other students. Mrs. Lowe loves the smile that he shares with his class every day, and he's a great leader. He says that Mrs. Lowe is really nice, too. She always helps her students with reading, math, and ten frames. She always makes sure her students do the right stuff. Mrs. Lowe rocks. Our next student is Julia Pascalone. I'm not sure if Julia was able to join us this evening, but her teacher's Mrs. Ferello, so if Mrs. Ferello's here, she can come on up and represent. But Mrs. Ferello said about Julia, that she is a teacher's dream, she's very kind and helpful, and Mrs. Ferello is very honored to have her in her first-grade class. And Julia said that Mrs. Ferello also rocks. She lets her students play fun spelling games like Buzz, and whenever students have trouble with their reading, she helps them sound out the words. Julia says that she had a great year with Mrs. Ferello. Brax Ruoffin is another great first-grade student nominated by Mrs. Nysley. Mrs. Nysley says that Brax is a joy to have in class. He comes in each day with a big smile, caring heart, and ready to learn. He works very hard and helps some other students who are struggling, and he even asks sometimes to stay in from recess. He never gives up and always tries his best. You rock, Brax. And he says that Mrs. Nysley is a great teacher because she teaches Brax about the rules and other stuff, as he said, and that he did not know how, that he did not know how to do it on the first day of school, but knows now. The class always plays fun games to help him learn the nouns and the verbs, and Mrs. Nysley rocks.
I want to tell you that I have his sister in first grade, and I remember when he was born, so this is a special one.
Oh, wow. Our next student is Zach Anderson in Mrs. Littler's class. Mrs. Littler says that Zach is a model student. He entered class the first day of school, ready to learn and to make new friends. He volunteers in class discussions and activity. He partners with different peers during class activities without hesitation. He's a great friend to all and has a great sense of humor. Zachary, you rock. And Zach says that Mrs. Littler too rocks because one day she let her class eat suckers at math. She is really helpful because she helps Zach sound out the hard words when reading. Mrs. Littler is a great teacher. There's a lot of great little incentives these teachers use, huh? Our next student is Avery Shive in Mrs. Calero's class. Mrs. Calero writes that Avery is a great example of an awesome student. She exhibits appropriate behavior day in and day out. She's an excellent friend and always willing to help. She works very hard, participates in all discussions, and does her very best work. She comes to school with a great smile, positive attitude, ready to learn and have fun. Mrs. Calero is so happy you are in her class. Congratulations, Avery. And Avery says that Mrs. Calero is always nice and cares about her students. At the beginning of the year, Avery did not know how to read chapter books, and now she does. Avery really likes to learn how to do math. She loves Mrs. Calero, and she is her favorite teacher. And our final student this evening is Kaylee DeSanto in Mr. Calero's class. Mr. Calero says that Kaylee is always polite and well-behaved, she is extremely neat and organized in everything that she does. She's kind and helpful to both her peers and her teacher. She is a very hard worker and always puts forth her best. She comes to school with a great smile on her face and makes our class a better place. Kaylee, you are Y, Wilcox rocks. And she says that Mr. Calero makes Wilcox rock because he teaches his students a lot of math and how to tell time. Kaylee says that she loves him as a first-grade teacher and that she'll miss him next year. If I could have all the students hold their little awards up in front of them, facing up to the audience, and give Mom and Dad and everyone here a big smile and say cheese We have a few more golden awards to pass out, so if you guys could stay seated, and we'll get on to, I believe, Dodge next.
This evening, we welcome Mr. Holland and Mrs. Hyam, and Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Huggins and Mrs. Mariola to the front. Lots of great Dodge students to recognize. Thanks for being here this evening.
Good evening, everyone. We are going to start by bringing up some young people to help share some of the exciting things that are going on at Dodge and some of the things that our students stand for. So I want to welcome Ava Turner, Griffin Wilmot, and Ellie Kinsel.
The character word for sixth-grade students for the month of February is trustworthiness. Think true blue. Trustworthiness is being honest. When you are trustworthy, you don't deceive, cheat, nor steal. You are reliable, you do what you will say. You do what you say you'll do. You have the courage to do the right thing, and you build a good reputation. You are loyal, you stand by your family, friends, and country.
And our Students of the Month from our Cheetah team that demonstrated all those great qualities are Carly Bova, Isaac Cantor, Courtney Jones,
The character word for fifth-grade students for the month of February was fairness. Students that are fair, play by the rules, take turns, and share. Fairness is being open-minded and listening to others. Students who are fair don't take advantage of others nor blame others carelessly. When you are fair, you treat people fairly. Ms. Mariola will introduce the Students of the Month for the fifth grade.
Good evening. Our fifth-grade students that I would like to recognize are Jacqueline Middleton and
The character word for the fourth-grade students for the month of February was responsibility. Students are responsible when they do the, when they, when what, students are responsible when they do what they are supposed to do, plan ahead, are diligent, and persevere. Responsible students do their best, use self-control, are self-disciplined, and are accountable for their words, actions, and attitude. Responsible students set a good example for others. Mrs. Huggins will introduce the Students of the Month for fourth grade.
Our Students of the Month for trustworthiness is Allison Bach Now, I'm going to ask our Students of the Month to kind of move forward. I need my announcers at the end so we can get a nice picture of you, and I need my Students of the Month to make sure that your certificates are facing forward, as well as I need my students who are announcing for me to stay here, too, because I know your parents would like to get a good shot and hear Tyler. Just move you up. There you go. All right. Need to smile. Don't tell me if you're not smart. Now, before you go away, students, I need all of my teachers that are here to represent their students from the Cheetah team, please stand. Thank you so much.
As they take their seats, give them another round of applause. Each month, we also like to recognize all those, the staff that help our students be great. And so we have three students, Teachers of the Month this year, this month, can't talk about this. And so the first employee that we'd like to recognize is Kristin Karpinski. Kristin is one of our speech and language pathologists at Dodge. She is one of, truly one of the most professional people that I've met since I've been in Twinsburg Schools. She was nominated by Kathy Custage, which is also one of our intervention specialists at Dodge. And I will say that as I become, get to know Dodge and get to know the staff and the students and the family, Kristin is always, has been so impressive to me to be able to make sure that we are moving forward in the most positive way, the most knowledgeable way, and to make sure that our students are represented and our staff is represented in a positive light.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of announcing our next Employee of the Month, and I'm going to do ours a little bit differently. I'm going to go through all the outstanding traits and let you deduce who it is. Our next Employee of the Month is just simply an outstanding teacher. She continuously goes above and beyond for her students and for her peers, colleagues, to support them. She is continuously spending hours and hours planning, preparing, poring through data. She's planning academic celebrations. She does a great job co-teaching. I've known her a long time, and I cannot speak highly enough about her. She's been nominated by Jen McQ, and that's somebody who's recognizing what she does from afar, from a different wing in the building, and just an outstanding co-teacher. She, whenever asked to step up and do something for our building, she does. She's a part of our scheduling committee, and she has hosted our senior tour, and just supports her students and colleagues in every way, and that is Kim Madden.
And last, but certainly not least, nominated by Kelly Reich, one of our great teachers at Dodge. This person is a person that does a lot of work behind the scenes. You may not see this person, this person's name may not be on all the letters that go home, but this person has been a wonderful asset to the classroom. Her genuine love for the kids is apparent. She works hard with the students to help them be successful. She goes above and beyond. She rarely takes a break because she knows the students will miss her. She is a wonderful person and an amazing team player. Now, I just, I'm looking at this audience, here, I gotta get a hug. I'm looking at this audience, and I see a lot more Dodge staff members who are here, who are in support of our students, as well as our staff members. Please stand up, don't hide, I will call your names individually. Mrs. Jensen, I told you. Thank you. As you can see, I just like to see that, and I know you all are humble and you don't want to be recognized, but to come out on an evening when you don't have to be here to support our families and support your team members, I think that does need to be recognized, and we appreciate you.
Well, congratulations to our Staff Members of the Month. One more round of applause, and if anybody wants to take a photo, now's your opportunity. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Dodge staff, too. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Tringo, the high school principal, and I see Mr. Silverthorne is here. I know that there are many high school students that are here to be recognized this evening, so welcome to our high school administrators.
Thank you. Tonight, we'd like to start with our Tiger Strong Students of the Month. I'm going to pass the mic over to Mr. Silverthorne. We have six students we'd like to recognize. We're going to start with Grade 9.
So for the month of February, our Tiger Strong Students of the Month, starting with Ronnie Little. Ronnie was nominated by Mrs. Kurt. She said Ronnie is really impressed throughout the year, very dependable student, always does what's he's asked, he steps up, leads lab groups, takes on responsibilities in class. Ronnie's a very creative student, kind, considerate to others. Mrs. Kurt said she's very proud of how far he's come, so congratulations, Ronnie.
All right. Ronnie, don't leave, because I don't think we've ever had this, two teachers nominated him. And let's see, after Christmas break, I don't know what happened, but Ronnie has had a major transformation. He really wasn't needing to stay after school because he was utilizing his class time so wisely. He was scoring so well on his daily homeworks, his quizzes, actively participating every day in class. day in class. His hard work was rewarded with him seeing that he could really understand the math concepts. This gave Ronnie a whole new self-confidence about math. I am so proud of him and this transformation. This is why I went into this profession, to witness these types of students, and when they have that lightbulb aha moment, when everything clicks and makes sense. I consistently have been telling Ronnie how proud I am of him and thinking of him, and I would like him to be recognized for Student of the Month, and he has had a positive impact on my students as well as me, and hopefully on his own high school career. And that's from Mrs. Randy Thomas. It's your math teacher. Alright, Ronnie. We saw your little fan section. Who'd you bring?
My mom, my nana, and my grandma, and my gramps.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Alright, be up here, okay?
Our next student of the month, freshman Nate McCoy. Nate was nominated by Mrs. Roberto. She says Nate always comes prepared to his academic classes, communicates well with his teachers, his parents, very polite. He's always polite, keeps a very positive mindset. He's a great addition to Twinsburg High School, so Mrs. Roberto nominates Nate McCoy.
Okay, Nate. Who'd you bring tonight?
My mom. Me, my stepdad.
Is that the lady with the camera?
Yeah.
Great. Thanks for coming.
Next, Mrs. Grummet nominates Dylan Smith for Student of the Month. Mrs. Grummet says Dylan's an extremely hard worker, never gives up, especially this year, has been dedicated to his studies, spending his study labs, getting the help he needs to stay ahead in math. She said she's very proud of the effort he's put forth in a very difficult course. So, congratulations, Dylan.
Congratulations, Dylan. Who'd you bring?
My mom, my dad, and my grandma.
Next student of the month for the high school is Amari Williams. Amari was nominated by Mr. Hurston. Mr. Hurston says she always has a very positive attitude, has a great sense of humor, and is a leader quietly through her actions and attitude in class, and she's a wonderful young lady to have in class. So, congratulations, Amari.
And Amari, who are your guests?
My mom, dad, my stepmom, and my little sister.
Next, Mrs. Lorette's nominated, Alicia Hall. Mrs. Lorette says that Alicia is doing a great job, ongoing commitment in performing well and taking pride in her work. She's come through a lot of adversity and has displayed determination, improving her overall grades in all her classes. In addition, she's very respectful, organized, and goal-oriented. This is why Mrs. Lorette said that Alicia Hall should be Student of the Month.
Alright, Alicia, who'd you bring?
Last but not least, Senior Julia Wendell. Julia was nominated by Mrs. Sue O'Reilly. In late January, this is kind of a neat story, Julia was invited to travel to Nicaragua with a team of doctors and physical therapists for a week to help needy people in rural Central America. There, she witnessed a lot of poverty, a lot of special needs, amputations and such. She assisted medical teams to fit grateful patients with donated equipment, to be a sympathetic ear and to hear heart-wrenching stories. Julia returned to her anatomy class at THS and shared all of her experiences with her classmates, had a beautiful PowerPoint presentation, and moved all the students and Mrs. Sue O'Reilly. Kids even donated money to help those children purchase backpacks filled with school supplies to allow them a chance at education in their own land. So, Julia is a wonderful example of one of our own doing great things with her talents. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Miss Sue O'Reilly's back here. These are our February students of the month. At this time, we have a special presentation for you this evening. Our building highlight is to show you a little bit about our new programming at the high school, our new actual world language, American Sign Language. If I could have Mrs. Kelly Loyman come on up and some student representatives of the
So, basically what I said was, welcome to my ASL class. Here tonight, I have five of my female students. I do have male students in my class, but out of my two, I only have five, and I don't think they were brave enough to come up on stage here tonight. One of our goals in sign language by the end of the year for ASL 1 is to be able to hold a very short, simple conversation. So, I thought tonight, we could show you a few things in order to be able to maybe introduce yourself, and when we introduce ourselves, what do we like to do? We then like to talk about ourselves. So, we're going to show you a few signs tonight so you can kind of do that if you ever encounter someone who is deaf. So, what you do is, first off, you can say hello. Or, you know, just a wave. And then, you would need to say, well, my name is. And the way you do that is, we'd say, my name, and then you would finger spell your In case you don't know finger spelling, we have McKenzie, Aspen, Caitlin, Haley, and Kirsten. So, some of the things that we do, see here, because we're going to have a little example of something that we do with these signs. So, in order to talk about yourself, you might need to be able to talk about your family. So, people in our family have mom, dad, brother, or sister, grandma, grandpa. Maybe us adults, we would have a son, or a daughter. And then, hopefully, maybe these girls, I don't know, now or down the road, they might want a boyfriend. And then, I'm sure that they have friends who are girls, so girlfriend. And then, down the road, we hope that, you know, if they choose to, they might have a husband, and they might become a wife, and not an ex-wife. We also like to probably talk about some upcoming things that are going to be occurring, and the next day tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day. In case you're not sure why they're kind of going towards their arm, if you aren't sure, you know, tomorrow, if you don't wear green, someone might come up to you and pinch ya. So, it's like pinch day. St. Patrick's Day. There is another variation where you could go straight out and then do day for St. Patrick's Day, or there's this other one. Can you girls do the other one? That means potato and then day. And then, the other one, right after that, down the road here, which I'm sure a lot of students are excited about in the future week here not to have a school, we have Easter. And a nice way to remember Easter, a student actually kind of said this to me, and I'm like, oh, that's so smart. It's like you're breaking open an egg. Kind of remember it. So, the girls here are going to demonstrate one of the activities we do to try and work on our conversations and do, basically, start trying to introduce yourself, saying, hi, it was nice to meet you. We had speed dating in class, so where they had different partners, and once the timer went off, I'm like, okay, go find your new date, and then we would switch it up. So, being that we have an odd number, I'm going to join in on the speed dating here.
We just wanted to demonstrate a little bit about this new class, and it's so amazing watching this foreign language going on because we feel like we're almost intruding. At least I am like, wow. And then, I want to learn more, like what the different gestures mean and things. So, thank you so much, ladies, for coming, and if I could just update you, we decided last year with ASL, there is certainly a need for it nationally and internationally, and we had 50 students sign up, so we had two classes. For next year, we have over 150 students signed up. So, we know that these are great ambassadors, and we know that we have a diamond in the rough here. And so, for two classes to really, all of the students that want to really learn about this language and learn it, and learn it well, so they'll be able to communicate with those with that special need out in life. So, thank you so much for this demonstration, and we always present Tiger Strong students with a little trinket, and how better than to recognize Strong? You were pioneers in this because you really were our first classes to... That's thank you. Okay. 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 You're welcome. Okay. But some of the gestures I can't do tonight. But anyway, but this is awesome, so we're just thrilled. And for Tiger Strong students, you always get our little trinket, so let me give you a little trinket. And, Ms. Loymans, you are, of course, a special person too, so you are strong in your own way. So, thank you so much. Enjoy the lanyard. Thank you, ladies. Great. Thanks for coming tonight, and we really appreciate this. Thank you. That was our highlight.
Board of Education, we want to thank you for taking a chance on growing American Sign Language at Twinsburg High School. It was an opportunity that we explored a year ago, and then this year, we launched the new program, and as Mrs. Turingo just indicated, it is growing by leaps and bounds. So, thank you for your support of American Sign Language. Ms. Loymans, thank you. You are definitely a pioneer here, and it's because of efforts of our teachers that they recruit kids to take these courses. So, I know that she's working really hard to grow her classes as well. So, thank you very much. That concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Powles. Certainly a sign of some progressive education, and I know, Ms. Turingo, I don't know if you can hear me, but I expect the hallways maybe be a little quieter than when we have 150, 200 students signing. Well, we always encourage you to stay. We do have quite a bit of business to cover, but there may be bedtimes and homework and things that need to get done. So, while we'd love you to stay, if you don't want to hang for the rest of the meeting, now would be a good time to go do some of those other tasks. Mayor, you have to sit down.
Stretching.
Yeah.
Haley goes right here. It's going to be our best friend. So, whenever I get, yeah, I take a picture. That was good because it was a side picture.
You got the picture?
Just of one of the girls I know.
Now, I tried, like, over.
Usually, it's the back. The back. Yeah.
Let the room empty out just a minute. Let the room empty out. I think Jen's going to get the doors. Judy is okay.
Alright, we're going to continue with our meeting, and we're going to be at committee reports. I'm going to see if any of my colleagues have anything from their committees. I know Policy, we're going to have a reading tonight, but if you want to go ahead and go through some of the policies. For reference, on the agenda, the policies, the first reading are in section, what is that? I, I, I-5, if you wanted to see the headlines of the policies. Doors almost closed.
Okay, we have a number of policy revisions, and some of them are grouped together by, I think it's administration, professional staff, and classified, but the policies are just similar. First policy that we had revised and updated, and by the way, in most of these policy updates, the revisions are made to reflect current state law and changes. Policy 1130 is policy related to conflict of interest, and basically, it's revised to include language from the recently issued federal regulations and specific language regarding financial interests and contracts, gratuities, and gifts haven't added. Policy 1630.01, 3430.01, and 4430.01 is in regards to FMLA leaf, and these policies regarding financial interests and contracts, gratuities and gifts haven't added. Policy 1630.01, 3430.01 and 4430.01 is in regards to FMLA leave and these policies were revised to incorporate the US Department of Labor's final regulations issued in February of last year, 2015. We have policy 2260.02 relating to single gender classes and activities. And this policy in December 2014, the Office of Civil Rights issued guidance regarding, or guidance addressing single sex classes and activities, including extracurricular programs. And one example of this is our mood swingers class at the high school. Policy 2461 is related to recording of district meetings involving students and/or parents. And this is related to, I'm sorry, it's revised to include rules about recording 504 team meetings and other district meetings like parent teacher conferences. And then we have policy on immunization and that is policy 5320. And basically that lists different requirements and immunizations that are required for school. And it tells more about, a little bit about exemptions and documents used as acceptable evidence for immunization. Policy 5517.02 is a new policy related to sexual violence and harassment. And this is from guidance from the Office for Civil Rights and they direct the, directs federal funding recipients to take specific steps in investigating reporting. And this policy details complaints, procedures, reporting, confidentiality and investigations. And it also lists our anti, I'm sorry, our compliance officers, Belinda McKinney and Chad Walker. Policy 7510 is related to use of district premises and updating Ohio Revised Code. Basically, there's House Bill 290, which replaces the words, schoolhouses, facilities, school grounds and uses the word school premises in place of those terms. Policy 8420 relates to House Bill 178, it's emergency situations at schools. And it was amended and it's dealing with requirements for drills or rapid dismissals and school safety drills. And this legislation changed current requirements for such drills. However, Twinsburg has chosen to conduct nine fire drills and rapid dismissals per year, along with tornado drills, safety drills, the Alice Drill. And at least one drill is required per month. Policy 8452 deals with automated external defibrillators and there were some changes made in the law concerning the AEDs according to Ohio Revised Code 3701.85. Policy 8500 is related to food services and language was revised regarding meal substitutions that is required by federal regulation. And the last one that we've revised is policy 9211 related to district support organizations and changes in policy further clarify the role that support organizations play in our school district. And like I said, three of them were related together on FMLA leave and on conflict of interest.
I think you've covered it. For those that are not aware, there's a lengthy policy with both revisions and new that the board receives, the policy committee reviews and recommends them to come before the entire board. But all five board members have received all policies and had time to review. So I'll see if anybody has any questions. We obviously get to it in action items. And is there any other committee reports? All right. Do we have any, any monsters, blue cars? Nope. All right. So we are going to continue with our meeting. We are now in treasurer's report recommendations. I don't know, Marty, do you have any comments?
Just the one thing, we have the amounts and rates resolution and that's, that's kind of following the budget period that we had in, at the first meeting in January. So this is just another step in the process. The county has looked at what we set them in January and then they are picking these back and we got to go back and forth a few times until it's all figured out and then they send us an estimated certificate of resources. So this is all part of that process.
Excellent. Any questions? I'll go ahead and read treasurer's report recommendations G1 through four, together without objection from my colleagues. G1, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of March 2nd, 2016, as sent to the board under separate cover. G2, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of January 2016. Bank reconciliation, general fund financial summary report and financial report by fund. G3, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a check register for the month of January 2016. The total, including payroll, is $3,793,743.19. And G4, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for these four as read? So moved. Moved by Mr. Soler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tor Waldron. Any discussion? All right. Roll call please.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mrs. Tor Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those four items pass 5-0. We're now at action items H and without objection from my colleagues, I'm going to read just items H1 and 2 together and we'll read H1 separately. So, H1, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit per the dates, terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks and that is exhibit H1. H2, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit H2 as per the dates, terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory background checks. Is there a motion for those two as read? So moved. Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mrs. Tor Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those two items pass 5-0. I'm going to read H3, employment supplemental contracts, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a supplemental contract, recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit H3 as per the dates, terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for H3 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tor Waldron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Tor Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Same.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes 4-0 with one abstention. All right. Moving right along to section I. Action items, new business. Let's see. I'm going to read the first eight without objection from my colleagues together and then we'll break out nine. So, I1, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit I1. Resolve, number two, I2, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from RDP Sports of Twinsburg, Ohio in the amount of $131 to the THS junior class, class of 2017. I3, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from the Twinsburg Rotary, attention Gary Suresi from Twinsburg, Ohio, of 310 dictionaries with an approximate value of $775 to the third grade students at Samuel Bissell Elementary School per the attached exhibit I3. I4, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Target in Minneapolis, Minnesota, in the amount of $429.33 for school supplies at Samuel Bissell Elementary School per the attached exhibit I4. And I5, this is the first reading of the new and revised policies that we heard Mrs. Davis report on earlier. And I'm not going to read the entire list, but resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the first reading on the following new and/or revised Board of Education policies. And this is I5 and those policies are listed there. I6, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Grade Expectations Show Choir and the Twinsburg High School Concert Choir to participate in the Los Angeles, I didn't say Los Angeles, Los Almeas, I jumped the gun. Show choir Extravaganza in California departing on March 18th, 2016 and returning on March 21st. The trip will be paid in full by the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters as sent to the board under separate cover. Seven, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Patricia Coslow for the independent public relations consulting services from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 at the hourly rate of $55 an hour, not to exceed 960 hours as sent to the board under separate cover. And finally, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Ohio Schools Council for the 2016-2017 school year to advertise and receive bids on behalf of the said board as per the specification submitted for the cooperative purchase of four 72-passenger unitized conventional school bus chassis and bodies. Okay. Well, can I get a motion for those eight items as read? So, I'm going to go with Mrs. Davis and Mr. Soler as the second. How's that? It was a tie. So going back, couple comments. Thank you very much to RDP Sports and the Rotary. And Kathy, you're a Rotarian, so thank you in person. And of course, Target for those generous donations. And I would just comment, because this is, you know, probably the, at least the second time that some of our colleagues have, have had the opportunity to approve Ms. Coslow and has been doing a, a great job in my personal, this one board member's opinion. I know it, we see a lot of hours there in this resolution, but I think we are consistently maybe using a third of that and that's per the superintendent's watchful, watchful eye. But the good things, the district profile and a lot of the communications, the good things that, that we do to try to get the message out is with the assistance of Ms. Coslow who happens to be with us here today. And Mr. Walker, I'm going to let you comment on, on I8 with regard to the resolution.
Sure. So, the, the last resolution from last board meeting was allowing us to purchase on last year's prices for the buses. This just allows us to check the prices for this year's OSC bid, Ohio Schools Council bid, make sure that it's not lower. If so, we would be able to have that price protection in the bid so that it doesn't commit us to anything. It just allows us to see those bid prices and make sure we're getting the best price possible.
Great. Thank you. And as always, you know, good reminder because last, last board meeting, we were able to make a resolution, take advantage of the fact that we can stay at current pricing. And I believe we also, so what was he, save $20,000 utilizing?
Yeah. Yeah. So, the previous resolution, we were able to negotiate a deal that not only allowed us to buy buses at last year's pricing, but it also, we had a bus that was, needed at least $20,000 of repairs. And so instead of fixing that, we were able to secure a lease, short-term lease for, at no cost to the board.
We might need a formal resolution to change your middle name to Grant, but I've made that joke before. It's a bad one. Any other questions from my colleagues? All right. Mr. Aho, we call the roll please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mrs. Tor Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those eight items pass 5-0. And moving on to the next resolution, this is going to be a long one, that's why I broke it out. This is on charter school funding and I spoke of this briefly in my president's report. Resolve to approve the following resolution to invoice the Ohio Department of Education for charter school deductions for state funding. Whereas it is the statutory duty of the Twinsburg City School District Board of Education to deliver the educational programs and services to the children, schoolchildren of the Twinsburg City School District and whereas the members of the board are elected by the Twinsburg School Community to ensure an effective, efficient and vibrant and productive system and whereas the elected Board of Education is responsible to the community, including taxpayers, parents and other patrons, as well as the state and whereas the charter school industry now extracts approximately $1 billion annually from the public school districts from across the state of Ohio. And whereas school districts, Board of Education have no control of students, financing, educational programming and student outcomes who enroll in charter schools. And whereas charter schools as a group in Ohio demonstrate low academic performance compared to traditional public schools. Whereas the Twinsburg City School District has lost $2,747 in state and local funding to the charter schools as of February 29th, 2016. Whereas this deduction has reduced programs and services to the Twinsburg City School District and whereas the Twinsburg City School District Board of Education has a fiduciary responsibility to the students and taxpayers of the district. Be it therefore resolved the 16th day of March that the Board of Education directs the treasurer of the district to invoice the Ohio Department of Education, state of Ohio, for all the funds extracted from the Twinsburg City School District for charter school students. Is there a motion for that as read? So moved. Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tor Waldron. And I broke this one out specifically just to have some, some discussion of my colleagues. You know, in my report, I addressed this briefly, why the empty gesture. And at the end of the day, we're in the business of education and we have a message that we need to get out. And yes, 60 other districts, and again, this is my opinion speaking, not board present, that 60 other districts have, have done a similar resolution as I mentioned in my report. We're not smiling, there is not going to be a big check, Ed McMahon's not coming, we're not taking a Twitter photo, we're not expecting any funds. But this is a issue that is, is not going away. We certainly could have used 2.7 more million of our money that people, you know, pay via levies to do that. So in my opinion, I'd like to continue the discussion with my colleagues and discuss this resolution.
I'll piggyback on that just a little bit. It's true that, you know, we don't expect any, to receive any funds and I want to make sure that the public understands the efforts, that the active efforts that the administration and specifically our superintendent has been doing for some time now. Driving down to Columbus, testifying before, before the Ohio School Board, as well as working actively with our elected officials in trying to seek resolution so that we're not impacted in the way that we are. We're going to continue those efforts because we feel that that's really, in my opinion, I want to say we, but in my opinion, I feel that that's the most effective means of impacting change in Columbus. Two other things with respect to charter schools. Charter schools are not going away. They've been around for quite some time. And the proliferation of online charter schools in particular are what specifically impact us in a very negative way. The way the charter schools are funded is my personal issue in that what we get from the state and the disparity with respect to what is taken away from us is the biggest issue that I have in my opinion. I think that there is a resolution that is directly in the laps of the General Assembly that I would urge our residents and even folks that work for the school district to call, to lobby our elected officials to encourage the General Assembly as well as the governor to directly fund charter schools out of the general budget instead of taking it out of the coffers of school districts. This has been brought up and discussed, but nothing has happened. And the only way that things are going to happen down in Columbus is if they get pressure from constituents. They can receive all the invoices in the world, which, you know, they're getting invoices at, at an amazing clip right now and there's no movement. So the only way that we get movement is to put pressure on them and more importantly, make sure that your voices are heard at the ballot box. Okay? If they refuse to do something, then we can do something in return. So that's one piece. And the other piece is the lack of accountability. As you all know, and I hope parents understand, that public schools and charter schools do not play on an even playing field. Okay? The accountability with respect to charter schools and the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability is not there. You can see it in the And the other piece is the lack of accountability. As you all know, and I hope parents understand, that public schools and charter schools do not play on an even playing field, okay? The accountability with respect to charter schools and the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability is not there. You can see it in the state report cards, especially if you haven't, take a look at the state report cards of the schools that are impacting us in a negative way, online charters. Take a look at the history, not just this past report card, but years past, 10 years back, and look at the performance. It has not improved, it is not, it's nowhere near the performance of this district, let alone other districts throughout the state. Online charters are the only charter schools where they cross boundaries. There are rules that they don't play by that even brick and mortar charter schools play by. So, the rules change, we're impacted in a negative way, we provide excellent education to our students, I'm not adverse to school choice, great, but make sure that the way that they're funded is, is equivalent to what is taken out of our coffers as opposed to taking out way more than what we get from the state. Again, strongly encourage you to be active, we're going to continue to be active, make sure that we, we keep the pressure on the legislate, on the legislature to do what's right for our school district, but I think that our residents and the community have a much larger voice in the process and we can do it by being active.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Other comments?
Well, Brad pretty much summed it up very well. We've lost more than 2.5 million to charter schools, so as he said, I encourage everybody, families, parents, to be active and write to your state legislators and make their phone calls and be known and be heard because they're just continuing to take money away from us that we could use for programs for our students and our, our children and our schools, so he summed it up very well.
Other comments?
No, just in agreeance as well, I think it's important that our community members, I always have people ask, what can we do? Don't be afraid to advocate for our children because that's what you're doing when you make those phone calls or you write those letters. Our children depend on that money and when it's being taken directly away from, you know, our students, I think it's important that we have a voice and we use it, so please don't be afraid to do that and we would appreciate it.
Thank you, and to kind of tie in on it, and I know there was some discussion about this when it first came up, you know, it's, it's important to realize that this is not the first time that the board or the administration has addressed the charter school issue and, you know, been fighting quietly behind the scenes and, and making our voices heard down in Columbus. So this resolution is not, not us jumping on the bandwagon of every other district who's doing this. This is, this is our, our response and our, our hope and our call to action for the community to bring this to light for those that might not have heard us talking about it in the past and asking, you know, for your help in bringing, bringing some accountability to our elected officials and, and helping out and keeping our tax dollars, you know, where, where you've entrusted them and that's in our district's hands and not in the, the hands of a private corporation, you know? So again, you know, we just ask that you, you know, help us in this fight and, and help join, you know, what the past board, the current board, and the administration has been battling for years, so thank you.
Thank you, and as we always do, we seek expert counsel, so I'll ask our administrators if, if they have any comments.
Mr. Felber, I'd like to, to ask Mr. Aho just to, to comment, he has been on top of this whole situation with charter schools and the way we're funded and how money's deducted and, Marty, can you mention that website too?
Yeah, there's the one website, Know Your Charter Schools, it'll walk you through some of the other charter schools, you can look at the schools and what their results are on the report card. It's all like in one, one place, easier to look up that way. You know, one of the things too is like you mentioned, the state, you know, starts off with the sum of money that they give every district and they do all these subtractions and we wind up with about $1,100 a student. They take almost $6,600 a student, so if we were to lose 700, like about 750 students to charters, we'd get zero state money. You know, we have, we have 4,200 students, so, you know, just, you know, that kind of stuff is just what goes on. So it's just, you know, like you said too, you know, they don't have the accountability that we do. You know, they have all these different layers, management companies and all these other things that are involved, so, you know, they don't have the, the same accountability that public schools do.
Other comments, Mrs. Powers?
And just, just finally, you know, our, our teachers, our educators do a great job here and, you know, it's very unfortunate that through the charter school efforts, educators are getting a bad rap. We have excellent teachers, they're highly qualified, they work very hard every single day, and when you put public school districts in the same arena with these charter schools and the results are what they are, it's an embarrassment for those of us who are educators and, and seriously, you know, as Mr. Curtis says, it's okay to have choice, but when you use public money, you better make sure that that choice is being used appropriately and that the results are good ones. And so I appreciate the Board of Education making this, this effort and this, this resolution. We continue to have conversation at the state level and hopefully one day this will change. In the meantime, we have to keep forward with our efforts. I appreciate our Twinsburg Education Association, Mrs. Nora Suda-Riley, our president, and OEA is, is all over this effort as well and together with, with our teachers and educators, maybe we can make a difference for kids, not only in our school district but across the state, because really, we're responsible for all kids, not just the Twinsburg students and we're responsible for what happens in our state with regard to public education.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Obviously, we need your voice to be heard, we need our voice to be heard, but especially to our taxpayers, our teachers, our constituents, we need your voice to heard, so, you know, put your foot on the accelerator, it's, it's time not to give up, so. Any, any further comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Toreal Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
And that resolution passes 5-0. We are now at miscellaneous, any, anything from my colleagues first off?
Just next week, next Wednesday at noon, the Twinsburg Rotary will be recognizing the Teacher of the Year for the Twinsburg City School District. Anyone is welcome to attend and that is at Brewster's at 12 o'clock noon. And also on April 9th, the Twinsburg Football Organization is doing a fundraiser, it is a game show night, it is to help fund some of the extra expenses for the football team, so if you're looking for something fun and different and exciting and a way to give back to our athletes on April 9th, let me know, I have some tickets.
All right, any further comments from miscellaneous? All right, we do have need for executive session tonight, so the, I will go ahead and make the resolution that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:21 to consider the discipline of a student or employee as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A and to prepare for bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms of employment as per, per Board of Education Policy 0166E. And again, I'll, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Toreal Waldron, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Toreal Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And that item passes 5-0, we are going to go into executive, executive session, we do not anticipate any further business at this time when we reconvene out of executive session, so, thank you and have a good evening.